Welcome to the June 12th meeting of the Select Board. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their conglomity for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thank you for being here. Let's just do a quick round of introductions from the board to ensure that we have a quorum, starting with you, Jen.
Jennifer Stacy.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Gilgenetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have our Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, and Executive Assistant Elizabeth Heck. And Select Board Member Jamie Stevens is not present tonight. Just to let everyone know, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on local cable. It is available upon demand afterwards. And the, I'm told the microphones are very sensitive, so they will hear you in the audience if, if you come in. So first up, we have the Juneteenth Proclamation. Chris, did you want to read that?
Sure. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, U.S. General Gordon Granger arrived in Gallusville, Texas, and issued General Order Number 3, which proclaimed freedom for all enslaved people in the state. And whereas the state known as Juneteenth is a significant milestone in American history, representing the end of slavery and the beginning of a new era of freedom for the millions of African Americans. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates resilience, strength, and determination of those who fought for their liberation and honors the contributions and achievements of African American, African Americans throughout our nation's history. And whereas Easton recognizes the importance of Juneteenth as a day of reflection, remembrance, and celebration of freedom, justice, and equality for all individuals. And whereas it is essential to foster a spirit of unity, understanding, and respect among all members of our community and to promote inclusivity and diversity as fundamental values. Now therefore, we, the Easton Select Board, hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth, a day to be observed and celebrated in our town. We encourage all residents to honor the historical significance of Juneteenth and participate in events and activities that promote education, awareness, and engagement. By recognizing and celebrating Juneteenth, we affirm our, we reaffirm our commitment to diversity, equality, and justice for all members of our community. Let us strive to build a society where the principles of freedom, dignity, and opportunity are extended to every individual, regardless of race, ethnicity, or background. Sign and seal this 12th day of June 2023, Select Board of Easton.
Any of the board members have any comments or questions? So this is the first time that we've recognized Juneteenth, so we're happy to do that tonight. And we'll see that it will lead into some more, some more reflection and activities for other things happening that day. So if somebody would like to make a motion for us to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Second, Barger.
Lamb and Barger, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. So we will sign that and probably put it on social media. So the second item that we have is the Civil War Monument Rededication Ceremony for Juneteenth, a community event, Monday, June 19th.
I would move, sure. We have Deputy Director of Public Community Services Cory Hoden is here to give some details about the event that we're excited to have. It was coming out next week.
All right, everyone. For having me here tonight. So on Monday, June 19th, next Monday at 10:00 a.m., the Town of Easton will rededicate the Civil War Monument to, and honor and celebrate Juneteenth as a collaborative event. I'm requesting road closure from School Street and Depot Street to Center Street and Depot Street, leaving both center lanes open to traffic from 10:00 a.m. to approximately 11:15. That's for the duration of the ceremony that will occur at the monument, which I'll tell you about in just one moment. And so guests and residents across the street to the Center School location, where we will have hosted by Raising Multicultural Kids and Human Rights Committee, our partners, in rededicating this monument and celebrating Juneteenth, will host a picnic for residents and guests in attendance. I've attached road closure map. Hopefully, you'll see the packet as well. So the rededication ceremony at the monument is very significant. The monument was originally dedicated in 1882. It was a local effort, you know, community effort. There's an original poem that was written by the town librarian at the time. Many of the, you know, just like what we're doing on Monday, sort of recreating the essence of, of that meaningful time. And it's, it's especially fitting that we do this on Juneteenth. And honest, I'll take the opportunity to, you know, give all credit on the idea to Connor when I approached him about rededicating the monument. Said, "Vendones are asking, what's the plan for this?" And this idea came into conversation. And it's just, it's gained traction as we've been planning. And the meaning just seems to keep building upon itself. So I'll just read a quick inscription that's on the side of the monument. It's, "Easton has built this monument in memory of her sons who died for their country in the war which destroyed slavery and preserved the Union." So I think we want to take that opportunity to capitalize on that connection, draw those, you know, strong connections amongst different groups in the community. And rather than just have it be a standalone event with, where we could just kind of make, make the most of getting the most diverse groups in town together to, you know, like-minded groups to, to honor this moment, this occasion. Monument, like I said, it's over 141 years old. Pretty amazing to have the opportunity to rededicate something like that as it's moved just a little ways. So the rededication begins at 10:00 a.m., Monday, June 19th. Guests will form in the road on Depot Street. We'll have chairs set up to face the monument. So the chairs will be facing backs to the Center School, facing the monument. We'll have remarks from American Legion Commander Teresa Pedico-Pool, Town Historian Ed Hands, representing the Historical Society. And BSU Professor Dr. Kevin McAllen is our keynote speaker. He's an associate professor of African-American Studies from Bridgewater State University. He's from Texas originally. He's got some personal anecdotes. And just, it'll be a very interesting keynote speaker for this. He's done a lot of Juneteenth keynotes before, so. And we also have Beth Devonshire from the Human Rights Committee, who is here with me tonight. And Denise Lane is here as well from Raising Multicultural Kids. But we'll have Angela Clark from Raising Multicultural Kids speak on those perspectives of what we can do to continue the fight for, for justice and equal rights in today's society and here in Easton, more specifically. And after the ceremony, guests will be welcomed to the picnic across the street like I had described. And that just, just our intention is just to have a thoughtful and meaningful rededication, like I had said, just draw on those, those common threads and, and just have a nice day with the community. So with that, I, again, I request the road closure. And I'll take any questions.
Sure. Any questions, Jen?
No questions. I think it's just a brilliant idea to have these two things associated in this way. And, you know, the Juneteenth celebration last year was really, it was a wonderful event. And I'm glad to see that tradition carrying forward and happening this way. So thanks to all of the hard work and the good stuff, and.
Thank you.
I'd like to pass this around. That's one of those lies that's going around social media and on the website as well, so.
Thanks. So yeah, same, same thoughts. So this is the second Juneteenth celebration we've had. And the coincidence of the rededication of the Civil War Monument, with that inscription, what Juneteenth stands for, it's just, it's a perfect fit. So it'll be a good day of celebration, remembering, reflection. And I think you've done this once or twice before, so.
Something similar. Completely trust you. Just hope for the weather and people to come out, so.
Craig?
I've been, had the privilege of being Zoom calls with both Denise and Beth and with Cory regarding this. And I'm very excited about the opportunity.
So one of the things that I love to see is all these logos at the bottom here. So we have so many groups that work for a common purposes. And when they come together, so we have Raising Multicultural Kids, the Easton Lions Club, the Human Rights Committee, the Town of Easton, the American Legion, the VFW. So to be able to bring together all these groups to celebrate together, it really, I think it's very meaningful to the community. One question that I have that just, I just thought of when you were talking about that, where will people park? Are they parking in the Center School? Or is there a specific place you want to direct people?
Great question, yes. Parking will be directed, when you show up and try to approach the monument, there will be an officer posted directing folks to park in Center School parking lot. Or if you're coming from the other direction, we've got permission from the History Room to use their lot as well. So we have parking on either side in the close walking distance. And we can make accommodations for folks that need to get closer or need special accommodations that way. We're also offering transportation through Health and Community Services Transportation as well.
That's great. So all the years that I've walked in the Memorial Day Parade, that when they have gone down that road, I've never, there's so much going on. You don't have time to actually look and really inspect and appreciate the monument. I'd never even knew there was a plaque there because you're just doing so many things. So I think it's great to have it to the side now where people can actually stop, take a look at it, you know, reflect on it, so. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, great. Do you want to, Connor, can we get one go?
Sorry, so, so you, you, um, you were doing the announcement on two, but item five is a road closure and then four is associated, I believe, Beth and Denise are here for that as well. But so item five is a road closure. As Cory has indicated, this has been circulated. The police fire TPW will have public safety outside to help with traffic control and routing and detouring folks. So the map is in your package. If you have any further questions about that, but I would recommend approval.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the logistics from that standpoint? Craig, you want to make a motion?
I move to approve the road closure requested by Cory Hoden. Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger, Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you.
Fingers crossed for great weather.
Thank you very much. Sorry to jump the gun on the order.
No, it's perfect. It's perfectly fine.
Could I have Beth Devonshire up for the next?
Hi, I'm Beth Devonshire from the Human Rights Committee. Good to see you all. Cory said most of everything, so thanks for the setup. We're just requesting $2,000 for the picnic that will be housed or had after for residents who are in attendance. It'll also cover food and portable restrooms, so $2,000 in total. $500 for the portable restrooms and $100 for food and ice cream. So that way, you know, folks have to pay. So that's pretty much it.
I think that's a wonderful use of the funds. I think it's really smart to have bathrooms available. I never really thought of that before for some of the things that we've had that might last a little bit longer. So obviously, you guys are experts in event planning. So. Very good. Any comments or questions? All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to, to, where's the, among others?
Sorry, I'm going to.
$2,000, incorporate $2,000 out of the store. He'll give funds for the Human Rights Committee for this.
Some of Barger, second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Denise, did you want to add any comments from, on behalf of Raising Multicultural Kids?
Um, I'm thrilled that we're working together truly as a community to bring about this wonderful event. I'm so thankful Cory's working for the town because he's really helping guide this event for us. And so I'm thankful that, you know, we have Cory and that we can work with the Human Rights Committee and other organizations to, to really represent Juneteenth in this way and align it with the, the statue, the civil rights statue.
Terrific. Well, while I have both groups here, I might as well kind of segue into something a little bit housekeeping. I think, is there some, some seats available on Human Rights Committee?
There are. There's two seats available. So we are welcome to have candidates apply. That'd be wonderful.
Right. So just go to the town website and go down to the bottom left. You'll see a blue panel and they'll see volunteering activities there for people that are interested. Look through all of the open seats we have for volunteers. There are others as well, but I know there's usually a lot of interest for the Human Rights Committee. And then as far as Raising Multicultural Kids, the work that they do in the community, always looking for volunteers for different events there. Both wonderful organizations. They work really well together, very complimentary. So anyone that's interested, reach out to either the Human Rights Committee or Raising Multicultural Kids or the Select Board and we'll guide you.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to do the liquor licenses real quick before we get to item six, so I don't forget them. So the first item that we have is a one-day liquor license for, for the Easton Cultural District Summer Music Series. It's on, gonna be held on the lot of our same halls as like last year. The dates are July 12th, July 19th, July 26th, August 2nd, August 9th, and August 16th. The concerts are from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. We had amazing response last year. So it's family-friendly. You can bring kids, bring log chairs. People sit on the, the steps of the hall. They sit, they're on the sidewalk. They're across the street at the Rockery. There's a lot of, a lot of places to hear the great music. So Easton Police Detail have approved the issuance of the licenses and they're working to determine if a police detail will be required. So. Does anybody have any comments or questions? So this will be advertised on social media and you'll be able to see who the performers are every Wednesday for those. So Craig, would you like to make a motion?
Move to approve the one-day liquor licenses for the Eastern Cultural Council Summer Music Series, July 12th, July 19th, July 26th, August 2nd, August 9th, August 16th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And I should mention that Frank Altieri of Shovel Town Brewery is going to be the vendor that will be supplying the beer and wine and managing the liquor license. So the next one, Frank Altieri has a private party at 50 Oliver Street on August 20th from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. He's applied for a one-day beer and wine liquor license for a private party to be held at his location on 50 Oliver Street. An Easton Police Detail is not required. Can I make a motion?
Move to approve the one-day legal license for Frank Altieri's private party on August 20th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. So next up, we have a presentation from the Tricentennial Committee for an update. So if you'd like to come up, introduce yourself.
Pull the chair out in case my wife is watching tonight.
I couldn't have a better co-chair. Let's just start with that. So hi, I'm Michelle McGee and this is David Cleckton. And we are the co-chairs of the Tricentennial Committee. And we are here tonight to just kind of update you on what's going on, take any questions. And our, all of our terms end on the 30th, so hopefully you've gotten everybody's re-up paperwork. That's what we're hoping anyway. Because we have a great committee. So our committee is 10, appointed by you. We have a treasurer, Jeanette Kamara. She grew up right here in Easton. She works for Bank of Easton. We have a treasurer, Secretary Molly Anne Tantillo. She's only been in Easton probably under a year, looking to get involved in a brand-new community in a brand-new town. Nora Yusup, who is A.L. Lee Williams' granddaughter, is on our committee as well. Dale Karister is on the committee. He is our Community Relations Subcommittee Chair. He's going to be here tonight, but he probably has something else going on. Courtney Puckin is our fundraising sponsorship Subcommittee Chair. We also have Michael Goode. Michael grew up here and then he moved away. And then he just recently moved back with his wife, two-year-old, and a very young baby. So it's great to have him on the committee as well. Our vice chair is Ed Hands, who I think you all know. And our Select Board representative is Mark Lamb. So one of the best things about our committee, in our opinion, is that we have people who were born here, raised, never left, left, came back, brand-new to town, been here for decades. We have older people, younger people, and it really is a diverse committee. And we're pretty proud of it and very happy. It's also a great committee because it's pretty fun. So we've been really enjoying, once we got the ball rolling, which was a little difficult at first, posting the agenda minutes and all those rules and stuff were kind of foreign to some of us. So, but we seem to be doing okay. And I'm going to put it, hand it over to Dave and we can talk about some of the things that we have discussed.
First of all, I would like to thank the Select Board as well as the Town Administrator and his assistant for putting this committee together. There seems to be a lot of excitement, a lot of energy that the committee has in terms of planning and preparing for 2025 Tricentennial. and preparing for 2025 Tricentennial. I think the committee and myself, as well as, uh, Michelle, uh, feel that by the end of 2023, we hope that we know what all the events will be. We'll cheer them, what will they cost, and where will they take place? And I know that, uh, our goal is to do the best job we can, uh, as, uh, you folks appointed us, to try and, uh, tell the story about the town of Easton. We certainly are excited about celebrating the history of the town. And, uh, our goal is to try to bring as many people in the community together as possible so that, uh, we get everybody involved. And, uh, as time goes by, I know 2025 sounds like a long ways off, but it goes fast, especially when you're.
Very fast.
Planning and preparing. I know that, uh, some of the things that we've been talking about is to try to involve as many young people as we can by going through the schools. We also hope to involve as many senior adults as we can, maybe through the council on aging, or, uh, some way we'll find a way to, uh, to make sure that we have, uh, a great sense of community. I think that's kind of a key word. Uh, what a great place it is to live in the town of Easton and to bring up a family. And I know that there are lots of people out there watching on ECAT that would agree with this. They may not be at this meeting. Our hope also is to, uh, meet again with the Fire Chief, Alexander, and to also meet with the Police Chief. We're gonna need security for, uh, some of the events that, uh, we are planning, uh, and preparing for. I know what it's like when you bring large crowds together, and I think that that security is gonna be key. If we do a bonfire and the fireworks display, which, uh, the committee has voted on, we certainly need the Fire Department cooperation. Our intention is to meet with, uh, Connor to, uh, talk about, uh, working with all the department heads, whether it's security with the Police Department, or the, where are we gonna have the location of the fireworks? And, uh, what time during the season should we have them? I mean, it's gotta be safe. I think we all count on that. Our intention is to, uh, have a giant parade. And yes, uh, I may have some crazy ideas. I'd love to ring all the church bells 300 times. I'd love to paint the, uh, the parade group red, white, and blue. So when people in town arrive, uh, months before, and they say, "What are these lines for?" That's a good way to promote the parade. The committee, uh, has lots of ideas, lots of suggestions. We're looking for the community out there, the people of all ages, uh, to make suggestions to us as we, uh, prepare and plan. I'd like to give, uh, a thank you, uh, to the late Lee Williams, who made an original donation, uh, for, uh, our 300th anniversary celebration. We really appreciate that seed money. And we want his family to know that, uh, the committee, uh, raises a hand to him for that contribution. We are in the process of, uh, with the fundraising committee, to do the best we can, as, uh, Michelle mentioned, to, uh, raise as much money as we need. We can't tell you the exact figure right now, but we're thinking around 150,000, uh, to make this celebration work. I'm hoping at the end of the celebration, and you can quote me on this, that, uh, we make a profit and we give some money back to the town. We'd like to have an anniversary book. Maybe we might recommend a sculpture at the end to remember the 300th anniversary. We have a treasure to open right now. Not right now, but, uh, when the anniversary year comes. It's being stored at the Bank of Easton. And we also intend to bury something that can be opened up for years to come. It seems that every member of our committee has something to contribute to the planning and preparing. And I'm hoping that, uh, we can bring the town together. Who knows? It may be black parties. Where there are people in town that may not even know their neighbors, we want them to come together and to enjoy, uh, the town of Easton. So I hope that, uh, you folks will be proud of the celebration as the days, the weeks, and the years go by. Uh, when we get closer and closer to 2025, we're gonna be excited about it. And we know that, uh, you're planning and preparing to get your tuxedos and your gowns to go to the, uh, anniversary gala ball. That's when we're gonna bring everybody together. We're gonna get sponsors for it, and that's one of the things that, uh, we're happy about. We already have a sponsor that's gonna pay for the fireworks. Can you imagine that? That's, uh, a tremendous donation. That's around $20,000 to $25,000. And, uh, we hope to be able to, uh, bring all of our elected officials together to celebrate the year 2025. And, uh, Michelle and I are excited about it. We're looking forward to him seeing it. And I just wanted to say to the Select Board that, uh, we did a radio show, that was televised at ECAT. Uh, the radio show, of course, is out of Providence. Our town administrator's been on the air with me. But we had a chance, uh, with an hour show to tell our story about the celebration and to get people excited about it, uh, not just here in Easton, but, uh, in surrounding towns as well. So we have a lot going, uh, we have a lot more homework to do, uh, to get the job done. I know we don't have a lot of time. Did I forget anything, Michelle?
Um, I, I don't think you forgot anything, no. I, I would say that, um, we, the, the committee did vote to have, um, four to five signature events. This will be a year-long celebration in 2025. Um, we have broken them up seasonally so that they will be nice and spread apart, that they'll be at different times of the year so you can enjoy the different, um, weather in Easton, the different, uh, scenery in Easton. Um, we have had a gracious offer from the Easton Lions Club to have a kickoff in December of 2024. They do their holiday festival, um, the first weekend of December, and they have offered to us to run that as, as a teaser. Uh, we'd like to have something on January 1st as a first-day event. Um, we're hoping that we'll have something in the spring, something in the fall, and then the gala would be in the winter. So those are the four signature events that the committee did vote on. The, uh, they voted that to have fireworks. We voted to have a gala. We voted to have a town-wide parade. And we voted to have a town-wide bonfire in addition to the Lions', um, offer, as well as we did vote to have a town-wide picnic, and that's gonna probably be my favorite part. But that town-wide picnic is going to, um, we haven't comboed up the event, so to speak. So we have discussed having the town-wide picnic followed by the fireworks, but we have also talked about having the town-wide parade, uh, marched into the town picnic. So these are all things that we're working on. We're hoping to have those fireworks in the same place that they have them 100 years ago, at the beginning of the, uh, I think, the 1900s. And, um, that is over Shovel Shop Pond, um, which we're hoping perhaps 2025 will coincide with the opening of the pavilion on the Governor Ames Estate. But we also noticed that there was some CPA funding for some landscaping at the town hall, and I happen to think that the town hall's lawn is the perfect place for a town picnic, not so much for fireworks, but, um, I love this lawn. So, um, yeah, so those are all the things that we're talking about. In addition to that, I would say that we have, um, we have a Community Relations Subcommittee. As I said, Dale Karister is the head of that. Ed Hands is also helping with that. Ed Hands is also our Events Chair. Uh, and there'll be a second tier of events that will be, um, we are gonna work side by side and hand in hand with the organizations in town. So we have already, obviously, discussed it with the Lions. They have come forward. We have talked to Raising Multicultural Kids. We have talked to the Human Rights Committee. Uh, we had a great meeting with, um, the Department of Health and Community Services last week. They have already agreed to put our logo, um, on all of the shirts that, um, they do in 2025. Um, we've met with the DPW. They couldn't be more helpful. They've agreed to put our logo on their trucks that year. So, um, one of the things that's kind of exciting is we are planning to have a logo contest over the summer. So, um, we're hoping to have, uh, we're hoping to really be up and running by the end of 2023. My vision for 2024 is, um, we've already, um, voted on having a website, so that's gonna be launching. We have a meeting at Seven Party on that. Uh, and we're gonna be launching that. And in 2024, um, this can, I hope this, there'll be a section on the website that will say, "What are you doing one year from today?" And I hope to have a calendar of 365 events, like next year on the state. They could be as small as, like, 12 kids in a playgroup or up to, um, the whole town. But the idea really, we have a meeting with the superintendent. The idea really is what Dave said, which is, um, these four signature events, we wanna make sure that all people can access them, that they are free. Um, the Department of Health and Community Services has graciously offered us their transport back and forth from parking lots to fireworks. We wanna make sure that we are appealing to seniors, kids, students, people from out of town, people who want to come back to town. And in that vein, we also are hoping that each month there'll be something historical that goes on. There'll be something crafty that goes on. There'll be something educational that goes on. So we've already met with the library, and as I said when I first sat down, this is the best committee to be on. I mean, yeah, everybody is happy to see you, and, uh, and that feels good, so.
That's great.
Just one final comment. I know we only have 10 minutes. Usually it takes me six minutes to introduce myself. But there are 10 minutes, I think, uh, there's a lot of information that we need to share with you. One of the things that we hope to include in our schedule is all of the annual events that have always taken place in the town of Easton. We wanna try to see if we can help them buff it up and, uh, make it a giant, uh, celebration. And it's for the entire year, so.
I also did want to mention too that we have done, um, some work with businesses as well. So we are, um, hoping that the business community will, um, work with us as well. Uh, we have asked Shovel Town Brewery to do a tricentennial brew that they will sell for the whole year. We have asked Hilliards to make a chocolate mold, um, that will only be sold in the year 2025. We're hoping they'll break that mold, and we'll bury it in the time capsule with the recipe for the tricentennial brew. Um, but, so we're looking for businesses to get involved that year. But we're hoping to do things even such as, like, if Farmer's Daughter would do a Benedict, a tricentennial Benedict for the month of January. Or Paperback Junction, we do a little book club for the month of February. So we are working with organizations, nonprofits, the town, but we haven't forgot the businesses. Um, one of my bright ideas is I'd like to have a town-wide scavenger hunt for the whole year, um, similar to if you've ever been to Chad and seen sharks in the park or oars in the stores where, um, businesses get a shovel. They decorate it however they want. They hang it in their business. We put out a giant, uh, scavenger hunt map with pictures of the shovels, and on the back will be the businesses that are participating. You go around, and it drives business to the stores. It, um, fosters that sense of community. You nail the map in, and, you know, at the end of the year, maybe we'll give the shovels away, or maybe we'll have a silent auction on them, or somebody will win a prize. But, um, yeah, we, we're busting with ideas. So I would say, like, the thing that we need the most is people. So, um, our committee is pretty tapped out on those sub-communities that we have. But we're looking for a fireworks coordinator. We're looking for a town picnic coordinator. We are looking for somebody to coordinate, uh, the bonfire, the picnic. Um, and then, uh, you know, all the other things that come along with that. But we love that this is so far in advance that, um, we're really, uh, I, I wanna meet like four times a month, but mine would be sick of me.
You probably should wrap it up because I know you have other things on your agenda, but.
Do you have any questions?
The 10 people that you have appointed is gonna multiply. We're gonna have an advisory group. It'll be hundreds of volunteers. It takes 35 to 40 just to run a parade, so you have a pretty good idea of how it's gonna mushroom. Are there any questions you may have?
Jen, start with you.
Uh, what is the best way for the public to reach out?
That's an awesome question. We do own the website, www.easton300.org, and that's three zero zero. Um, and that will be launching very soon. So they can also, um, reach us through at email at easton300@outlook.com. So that's an awesome question.
Awesome, yeah. It, it's so exciting hearing you talk and all the ideas.
Yeah.
Like, I was just thinking, like, oh, you know, the kids' perspective, like, I can imagine, like, children have so many great ideas that would be just adding on value and.
Right. We, we, we're still excited to have the logo contest 'cause somebody was just telling us that they had a contest for the Blanche Ames, uh, logo or, or some drawing or some kind of artwork, and that that student has moved on to college, and he still talks about it at college, like, "My old, uh, town. I got my, you know, artwork all over the school." So we're pretty, you know, we're pretty excited about the logo contest too, so.
I assume there'll be a lot of activities, like, uh, fundraising, other things over the coming year, where we'll be hearing updates that we can.
Yes, so we're going to have sponsorship levels, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be working on that. But, um, yeah, we have some pretty creative fundraising ideas too, so.
Looking forward to seeing it here in more.
We have a few meetings, yeah.
Mark?
Uh, it, echo everything that Michelle has said. It's, it's an intense group, as you can tell. There's a lot going on. Um, it's a lot of energy, a lot of amazing ideas. And, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna take, uh, a community to pull it off. So anybody who can step up, participate, volunteer, uh, it is key. And you get, these guys do an amazing job. And you, you can tell the energy coming off of them, even if you didn't want to participate, you have to.
Yes, you would have. My goal was to get us, like, chronicled, but, like, that's gonna be a done deal. My goal is national attention, and I think that we can do it. I was talking to Kristin Kennedy this week, and I'm like, "You have a, a, um, community, uh, Health and Community Services Department that other towns should sit up and take notice of the way that they have umbrellaed those, um, Council on Aging and, um, Recreation Department under that umbrella? Let's, uh, let's get that started in some other cities, towns, and states."
I'd like to light up all the historic buildings in town. This community is amazing when you take a look at the buildings that, that we have. And thank you, Mark, for your participation with us.
Excellent.
It's a pleasure to be here. I, I just love the enthusiasm, you know? Uh, you guys are great, so.
We're excited.
I look forward to it.
So, uh, one of, a couple of the notes that I made is I really love that you're recognizing that, you know, sometimes when things happen in the community, people feel left out, and they feel like it's only for the people that are in the know, so to speak. So to be able to really be very vocal about, you're looking for, um, for everyone in the community to participate. Young people, old people, new people, uh, people who've lived here forever, so that everybody has a sense of that.
People don't drive, right? We're gonna get them all there, yeah.
Exactly. So I love that. Um, making it free, you know, cost is a barrier to a lot of people. Um, we've talked about, you're gonna speak with the Cultural District, and we, the Cultural District wants to be a part of that as well. And that's one of the goals of the Cultural District also, is to not have a barrier to participation. So, um, to have, have these things is really great. Um, and, uh, I think when we envisioned this, we did think of it like that. You know, you are not gonna be able to put on all these events. It's just like with the, the Cultural District Management Partnership Team, where to think up the ideas, but then we want a team of volunteers to come in and help execute those.
Absolutely.
So it is, it's gonna take a lot of people.
And we have a lot of ideas. If, if there's anyone out there who's thinking, like, "I really wanna participate. I don't know how." We have lists of ideas for you, and we will help implement those ideas. And, um, it's gonna be a true partnership as far as, um, we're gonna promote it. We're gonna be right there with our volunteers, doing it with you, so it's a good partnership.
And that's kind of like the way the Lions Club operates too, is that you can participate in a particular event or a particular volunteer activity. It doesn't have to be everything. So sometimes people get a little nervous to join anything because they think it's just gonna be too much. If you say, "I just wanna help with the parade," or "I just wanna help with this or that," or "I just wanna share some ideas," so, uh, it's a really great way to set it up.
I'm sure you are. I, I think our committee is, is about as good as the people we surround ourselves with. And those are all the volunteers. They're gonna come together with their expertise, and we're gonna try to diversify the celebration. Lots of diversity, lots of history in the town of Easton.
We got Ed Hands. We're good.
And, uh, last but not least, I would just say that I think of Lee Williams very often, and I think he- And last but not least, I would just say that I think of Lee Williams very often, and I think he'd be so proud to see this and to hear this for his eightieth birthday. He wasn't able to parachute in from the helicopter like he had tried because of weather issues that day, but he did ask people to donate towards, towards this tricentennial committee, and I know that people did, so he really cared a lot about it. So as you're moving through this, I think you're gonna, you know, having Nora involved and his family is really important, and I'm glad that you recognized that and spoke about him.
Good idea, and we also hope to have a flyover for the parade.
Thanks, Jen.
And.
Not a parachute, but.
Maybe the marshal guy, who knows, but.
Excellent, well, thank you so much for being here tonight and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
We'd be right to be.
Really appreciate it, unless you would like us to come back and give you an update, and thanks for your support.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have a vote to approve the issuance of other details of the bond anticipation note in the amount of six million nine five thousand dollars dated June twenty first, and signing related closing documents, so. Hello, thanks for being here tonight.
Okay, now we have to let a little bit of air out of our happiness balloons while I'm at that. Bee in instead of other fun things.
Well, the band is allowing us to do things that are also very important to the community.
That is true, that is true, that is true. So I did see in March for the annual borrowing, I was a bond and a ban in March. Shortly after we finalized the numbers for the bond and the ban in the spring, we, the water projects really started to pick up, and so I'm back again. Looking for some short-term money, this is not permanent financing. The bond anticipation note, just to let you know, is temporary financing. When you have your bonds, all of the money in a bond has to be spent within a certain amount of time, or you pay penalties on it. So you don't bond all of your borrowings right away, you ban them or get a bond anticipation note. Temporary financing is to get you over the hump. We're expending a lot of money right now, so we need to have a little bit of the, of temporary financing coming before we finally bond it again. We've been very much aware of the market and how that's doing, it's very hard to anticipate anything, but I think we're doing as well as can be expected. This ban sold on June first for the net interest rate of three point eight percent roundly. And, but our, our mid-one rating helped with that. I did have an opportunity to ask the finance people how that three point eight percent stood compared to other bands that had sold recently in the same amount of, approximately the same amount of money with a community that has a mid-one rating. And she said, we're right, we're right there, so we're doing as well as we possibly could with the interest rates.
Right.
So, I did include a memo in the packet outlining what it was. This is for three million for the water treatment plant project, one point six seven for the PFOS treatment facilities, and then a combined total of one point four for the water main replacements. This is water main replacement one and two are both the Founder Street and Norton, Norton Ave project area. But they're two different authorizations, so they're split up, for my purposes.
Okay. Excellent.
So, and I'm here, can I ask if you would vote on that? As we have before, we're going to vote by reference, the, the actual text of the vote will be incorporated in the minutes of the meeting.
Okay, great. Any questions, Jen?
No questions, as always, very clear, thank you.
Same, thank you.
Awesome. And thank you for, you know, I, I like the way that you explained this, especially the difference between the ban and the bond. It's good for our, for us and it's good for the people at home to understand how that works because most people, including myself, don't really know the inner details of that, so glad we can count on you for, for that real clear explanation.
Craig, you want to make a motion?
I move to adopt the votes prepared by Bond Counsel in connection with the town's offering of the six million ninety-five thousand dollar bond anticipation note dated June twenty first, two thousand twenty-three, and incorporate the text of the vote of the select board into the minutes of this meeting.
Second, Lynn.
So it's Bajra and Lynn, all in favor?
You name it.
Excellent, so we will have a big package for signature tonight, I imagine.
Yeah, it's not too big, not like the other one, maybe ten, can be.
Okay, excellent, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have discussion and vote on contract EFD twenty twenty-three dash oh four for two mini pumper fire engines from Bulldog Fire App Apparatus. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Jake.
Um, so tonight, we have a standard contract, but the really interesting purchase due to one of our engines, this is a partially insurance replacement due to one of our engines being taken out of service due to an accident. So instead of just rehashing everything, we always do the same way, we put our thinking caps on and try to come up with a way to do something better. Fire Service is known for its staunch tradition, and we try to challenge that when possible, if it's going to do the best for everyone. So what we're doing with these two mini pumpers is they are on a smaller chassis. So after we get the question, why do we send these big fire engines to medical emergencies with the ambulance? You know, they're big, they use a lot of fuel, they're expensive, their maintenance is a lot. And we don't have a good answer a lot of the times because we need those trucks, because if we're at a medical emergency and then a fire comes in or a car accident comes in, nobody wants us to take a Ford Explorer all the way back to the fire station to get in the fire engine to go to the next call. They want to have everything ready, so we have to take it with us. We're fortunate in that we have a staffing level that we can incorporate these smaller apparatus, so they bridge the gap between the big trucks and the small trucks. And what will happen is for less than half the cost of a full-size fire engine, we could put one of these in a station, so our Station One, Latho Street, and Depot Street, Station Two, that whoever has the first medical emergency, so we get simultaneous emergencies all the time, but whoever gets the first one would take one of these smaller apparatus that has water, hose, a full-size fire pump, ladders, a lot of equipment, it's just a mini drive version, and it actually sits on an ambulance chassis, which is much cheaper, easier to maintain, we can actually change the engine with our great mechanic if we had to, we don't have to, but we have that ability where with the big trucks, we don't. Fuel savings, cost savings, tire savings, the difference in set of tires is probably two thousand, three thousand dollar difference in tire costs per change. A lot of value to running these, but people ask, well, can you handle fires and other big things if you're running these smaller trucks? And we're fortunate that we'll be able to have two, and whoever has the first one takes one of these, and if we have a simultaneous second call, they would take the big truck. So that any one time, we have one of the big fire engines on the road with one of the smaller ones, and we won't have two on the road at the same time. So that way we can handle whatever comes our way, and the residents are safe and we're saving funds. And when it comes time to replace these in the future, there are three, well, currently, you know, you're talking in the three hundred thousand range versus a new fire engine, which is quickly approaching a million for a fire engine, not a ladder truck engine, which is unbelievable. You know, beginning of my career, fire engines were in the three hundred thousand dollar range, and now they're almost a million. So that's the story of why I'm here, our attempt to maximize our ability and effectiveness and stretch depending as far as we can. So, any questions, I will take them.
Jen?
No questions, sounds brilliant, so fantastic, thank you.
I, I enjoy the out-of-the-box thinking, it seems like the older I get, the bigger the fire trucks get.
They do.
And I always scratch my head, I'm like, well, the fires aren't getting any bigger, what's happening here where they're just getting, the equipment's getting huge? And so to go back in your logic and the cost, it seems like it's a really smart move, so, well done.
And to your point, the new fire engine that's due in the next month or so is actually bigger than the current fire engines in Easton. And it's all kind of part and parcel because the amount of tasks we have to do now, even versus what we had to do fifteen or twenty years ago is greater, and we need more room for the equipment. So by having the larger fire engine, we get to put them on the truck the way they should be stored, but by having these mini pumpers come in at the same time, we don't have to put on the road as much. So it's actually, it works out really well if this all kind of coalesced together. And I got to give a lot of credit to my deputy John Carroll because we batted this around, but he, he really put this together, so give a lot of credit to him, credits too.
Excellent, Craig?
You answered my que, my initial question was why, why we do this small engine, it makes a lot of sense, but I agree with, with Mark. What's the timeframe for, you know, the, the bigger ones, there's a long, wait, what's the timeframe here?
So we lucked out, so really funny, quick anecdotal story. This guy put a bug report in my ear about these, and I started, I think my phone listens to everything I do, because all of a sudden Facebook started showing me these trucks. On it, it's a true story, so and I was like, ah, I ignored it, I ignored it, and it just was relentless. And then I looked at who the local dealer was, which was Bulldog, and I know the father of the, the salesperson, so I call him, like, hey, can I have your son's number? And I call him, he's like, yeah, we've got two that we can deliver in ninety days. So I'm like, well, that's just a match made in heaven, because otherwise it's two years.
Yeah.
Even for the little trucks, they're two years because we can't get the chassis, the chassis is out of Ford or, or any, any chassis that matters is really hard to get. And fire engines are two years, ladder trucks are pushing three now, so it's, it's really hard to get trucks.
And not to be a procurement bureaucrat about it, but even more serendipitous than the logarithmic advertising from the chief was the fact that Bulldog is on a consortium purchasing contract verified by the Inspector General's office, so.
Absolutely.
That's very important.
Yeah, gives the flexibility to quickly to grab them because somebody else would have, so we're lucky.
Actually, do you have a question?
Sure.
I assume, but if you could give some detail on how the maintenance repair operations of these compare to the big engines? I assume it's significantly easier because they're not quite the big piece of equipment that has so many parts and.
Absolutely, so the chassis that these, the body, so fire trucks, even the little ones, are all created the same. They get a rolling chassis, cab with rails in the back, that gets manufactured and it gets sent to a bodybuilder. The bodybuilder puts the pump on, the water tank, and then the body where all of our tools go. Those are all done in separate places, the new engine that's coming, the chassis was built in Michigan, the body and pump were put on in Iowa, and then they drive it out here. It's all very much the same across the board, so the chassis that this is going on is very much akin, very close cousin to your standard Ford, like F three fifty work truck, just a little bit bigger version. You see some of the, like, the landscaper dump trucks you see, they're typically the F five fifty dump trucks, and that's what this is. It's just a little bit longer frame, same engine, same transmission, same as our ambulances, the Ford ambulances you run around, exactly the same. So one of the things we're trying to do is create uniformity within the fleet around the engines and transmissions and the filters that they use. And so, and then our mechanic can be familiar with the same piece of equipment. It's because it's the same engine and same wiring, it's in the same, all the trucks, it becomes that much easier to work on them. It's familiar, there's no, you don't have to lose that, you know, two or three hours of, well, where is it on the truck before I can fix it, and I don't know where it is. And that's, that's really important, it saves a lot of time, so that's kind of how that chassis works, very much like a pickup truck.
So you might have to talk with them about some advertising concessions, because when the other towns see this, they're going to really want one too, so that's great.
I actually saw one the other day in Hanson, just before this, before this meeting, and I said, that's the smallest fire truck I've ever seen in my life, where did that come from? And it was really interesting, it was like a toy fire truck.
Exactly, so these are, they're often, this style of truck is often used as a brush truck, set up a little bit different, so a lot of communities have similar, but not quite this. This is more set up to be able to put a house fire than a brush fire, the way it's rigged, the way the pump is. And a lot of communities have them, but in some communities even nearby, they'll run these with one person in them because their staffing is limited. We're fortunate that we're not in that situation, so we can actually run them as a mini pumper. Whereas some communities, they'll have to send two people and an ambulance and one person in this, because that's all they have. But we're not in that situation, which is great, so I, I think it's going to be a great success. I will, I will say in a little bit of humor that if I was on the line running in the fire trucks, I do think riding around the big truck is much cooler. But I think the staff will adjust and understand the value and its maneuverability, and it parks a lot easier when you have to park somewhere. Because we don't want to park in the fire lane unless it's an emergency, and this truck parks in a parking spot, so.
I was there before.
There's a windmill right there.
So the last time we, we got a big fire truck, we, that you guys drove it to the meeting, and we got to a select board meeting, we got to go out and see it. So let us know when they come in, so we can come down and check them out.
We will, and we'll have the, the new engine come too, because I think that'll be a big, no pun, it, it's, it's a much different truck than Easton's ever had. It actually goes back to one of the studies from the early nineties on the fire department and its future, that it needed a rescue bumper, and that's actually what we have coming in. So we'll bring that for a meeting as well, so you can see it, because I think you'll, you'll be impressed with what it can do and what it has.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Great, yeah, maybe we should have those before town meeting or something, because I think people think that was really cool to check out. So this dollar amount is six hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars, and it was appropriated, excuse me, at the annual twenty twenty-three town meeting for approval, so we are just going to be voting on the contract to issue that contract to Bulldog Fire Apparatus. So Craig, you want to make the motion?
So move, Bajra.
Second, Lynn.
Bajra and Lynn, all in favor?
You name it.
Thanks, Jay.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, appreciate the support, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
The next item we have is a contract vote for Southeastern Regional Services Group, Sursage for coordinated rubber traffic line painting, thermoplastic traffic line painting, and epoxy traffic line painting for the Department of Public Works markings.
Sure, so attached to your packet is a one sheet for Sursage, as a board will recall, Sursage is the southeastern regional services group. It's a purchasing consortium where the, it's a consortium of towns in this area that bulk procure goods and services frequently for public works-related deliverables that we have to do every year regardless of the community we're in, this is for a line strapping contract. Assistant Town Administrator Blanchard, man of the disease, he's recommended the work supply.
Excellent, any questions?
This is just, so as we go along and we need to mark the lines, or is there something for a specific? As, as the, yep.
That's part of our work.
As I see there's a depot street now, creating lines, et cetera, depot street.
Right, that's separate from the existing tip project.
Okay.
All right, excellent.
Can I get a motion to award this contract, the, the, well, is it awarding a contract or is it, how, what's the program?
Uh, it would be, uh,
To award.
To award contracts as detailed in the Sursage document.
Okay.
So move, Bajra.
Second, Lynn.
Bajra and Lynn, all in favor?
You name it. All right, next, we have discussion and vote, amendment prior, amendment to prior vote to authorize the Town Administrator Connor Reed to execute the aggregate community choice supply price contract for a term of up to three years beginning November twenty twenty-three.
Sure, thank you, don't ask us for it, we'll recall back in April, we had a update on the town's existing aggregation program where we were fortunate to lock in supply price for almost everyone in Easton at about ten cents per kilowatt hour back in February twenty twenty, right before COVID, before Russia invasion of Ukraine, so obviously we benefited tremendously as a community from that three-year rate lock. That program and the locked rate expires is coming November, and so we need to make a decision about procuring locked-in supply rates once again for a fixed term, whether it's twelve, eighteen, twenty-four, thirty-six months. In April, based on some of the indicative pricing, we were hoping to see closer or below fifteen cents per kilowatt hour. Unfortunately, since then, we've gone to bed, and while there was a single option available under fifteen cents, it was a single option out of a spreadsheet of probably three dozen, so it's, it's just not really where the market was at at the time. And Colonial Power is recommended, and it was the subject of discussion back in April, I don't remember which board member brought it up, but fifteen cents was a close call at the time, and I didn't feel comfortable picking that because it was the longest possible term. Included in your packet is a forecast, admittedly it's forecast, of where Colonial feels basic service rates may land in the next thirty-six months, which obviously there's a lot of volatility in this market right now for a whole host of reasons. We know that right now, summer basic rates are fourteen cents, which is higher than our ten-cent locked rate, but is also not that significantly different than pricing we were seeing. But again, I had reservations about picking the, the literal sole only option out of multiple dozen that would technically met the board's authorization, because I, I personally and Colonial don't necessarily know locking into anything for three years is the right move right now, given the volatility of the market. So I don't have an exact number, which I'm sure you all appreciate, but I wanted to just open that discussion up and get feedback and potentially amend the authorization to a, a different figure. We obviously want to be sensitive to the fact that if we do fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, you know, we're seeing projections for winter next, not next year, winter, so the, from rates starting this November, which is when our current rate expires, being closer to nineteen cents, so obviously we're going to continue to actualize the savings against the market. But no matter what we do, whether we do no aggregation, which I don't think is advisable, or if we go into a shorter term one and maybe get a little bit of a better rate, people's supply price will go up compared to today because we've been very, very, very fortunate, the ten-cent rates are not happening right now or for. Because we could very, very, very fortunate the ten cent rates are not happening uh right now or for some time.
But there'll still likely be significant savings, just not
Yes, I I think this this will be much closer to the original design of the aggregation program, which the goal is to actualize savings. But it was a much more moderate savings, um a net savings over a given twelve-month period where you would probably be saving on supply costs in the winter months and potentially pay slightly more in summer. Um that's probably the what will happen no matter what we do. So maybe we end, I think probably the best case scenario we end up in, which again, I can't predict the future, but is that we lock into a new rate that while more than what we all pay today is less than the winter basic rates come November twenty-three. But it's likely that whatever rate we lock in will probably be above or may be above summer of two thousand twenty-four. It is dramatically above if they shift and you see grid basic go down to, you know, seven, eight, nine cents, which is not what they're forecasting in the summer. Folks can opt out of the aggregation plan at any time if that became a financial burden, and they could opt back in at any time if they felt the need.
Right.
Um so it's it's just not going to be as resoundingly, kind of indisputably clear cut as we have the uh frankly, the lock to have this time.
Ooh, it's genuine, yeah.
Okay.
But the downside risk of doing nothing and waiting too long uh is getting closer to we don't want to run out of runway and have no choices come fall if prices are getting closer to eighteen, nineteen cents. Um and if we don't go into a program, which we could be an option we take, if these forecasts bear out um and you end up with something close to nineteen cents per kilowatt hour in the winter, that's almost double what people pay today. So there will be, that'll be people with less to do so.
What do you base it now?
On our plan or in?
Uh in the forecasted to future to lock in.
So um we like I said, as suggested on the top, we only had one program which required a thirty-six month term to get, it was like fourteen cents.
So.
There were others for short terms that were closer to fifteen, fifteen point two cents.
So are you are you wanting the fourteen cents or the thirty-six month term?
No, I don't feel comfortable um just locking it for three years.
Okay.
Because if you look at in the packet, they are forecasting due to a variety of factors years down the road with uh growing wind energy in Massachusetts. Uh portfolio, there was a recent court case in Maine that will open an energy pipeline coming down that had installed for quite some time. And it's, there's a lot just active land war and.
And right now we're at what, ten cents?
We're at ten cents in the locked-in program.
I I I'm not completely dismissing the idea of fourteen cents over thirty-six months, I just don't see how it will come down in a few, in three years, or even what you suggested, if that were to start today, so the 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 benefits of that would be years.
But years, correct.
So between now and when that comes online, it's climbing.
Well, there, that is not what Colonial's forecasting.
We're okay.
They're forecasting, so right now we know summer is fourteen cents and change, summer rates right now for N grid, not for us, grid ten. They are forecasting a a projected three-year average of about fourteen and a half cents, but looking at nineteen cents this winter, ten and a half cents next summer, seventeen and a half cents two winters from now, nine cents. Um.
What's the average of all those?
Fourteen uh fourteen and five.
So the average is fourteen five.
Yes, this was.
Over all of those years, you, I mean, just to throw out there, a safe thing could be, well, just lock into fourteen now. Because that's what the projection says anyway.
Sure.
Uh and I understand there's risk involved in that, of course, but to just throw out that idea, I I don't talk about it.
So what's what's that?
I I am, I will, this is my worries because that was.
When when and when do you want to make your decision? But I understand November we you have to, but and you want runway. But when, I mean, it's June now, that that's coming up.
We'll 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 go back to the market. Um figure out, I might have some pricing due to me tomorrow morning. I'm not, do I? Yes, okay.
What was the last thing, the pricing?
Um.
May?
It was in May.
So May, okay. So it's about a month's new pricing, maybe tomorrow we'll shed a light on some for you.
Yeah, right. Right, uh but I I think really, if not so much on price, because although and because fundamentally, no matter what we do, there will be, people will feel an increase in their supply costs. Even if you get a home run, a home run in this market, fourteen cents, thirteen cents, which we're not seeing, um will still feel like more because it is and what folks have been locked into.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess some feedback from board on term would be really helpful. Colonial at the time of May, based on what they have been seeing from a, were a little um cautious on a thirty-six month term. But I do, I'm, that's perhaps the most helpful feedback I can get from the board is is on that. I think one year is too short. I think three years might be a little bit overcommittal, maybe something in the middle, either eighteen or twenty-four. Um but I'm open to feedback. So I appreciate, you figured that's in the fourteen, since it's three years, that's still worth considering.
I would say it's worth considering. What would you guys think?
My dad is telling me summer closer to the two-year mark is a better option, just because of what the forecasting is saying, there are so many variables and.
The forecast averages out at fourteen and a half.
It does, so in two years, if it's still there, we can go back to table and.
Right, that's another aspect of, if a market is, so that's a three-year mean. If the market is moving in that direction, so let's say we're looking at a two thousand twenty-five and six period in what Colonial's forecasting is, you know, nine point eight cents in the summer of that year, which would be when we're going to market. If the market has started to slowly drop down, per we may see that in new terms, um multi-year contracts. Because it's not as if this is the only extension we could ever do.
What what's the two-year terms right now, total, the cost of a two-year average? It's fourteen cents in three years.
You you see nothing, so this is partly why I came back, is there was nothing, except there was a single vendor in a single proposal under fifteen cents, which was the fourteen cents and change for three, everything else was over fifteen.
How much over fifteen for the two years?
In there, based on um the the portfolio.
Yeah. Was the lowest?
Two. Below.
I'm just trying to find like, are you talking eighteen cents, nineteen cents?
They were around seventeen, eighteen cents.
Okay.
Lacking cents.
Yeah, two.
Not not all of them. There was there was some in the higher fifteens, but I don't know that it probably
Okay.
because it's considered confident of market information, because it doesn't, it's irrelevant now because of it's gonna be based on tomorrow. But I think there was some fifteens, higher fifteens, lower sixteens. But it's gonna it's gonna just.
Because that helps comparatively, right, my head, right, you know, you so you your gut says two, so what's the cost of the two?
Well, so a one penny difference is 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 borderline not perceptible. Um right? So that's where a lot of it's a kind of policy question of, do we want to lock in for, because the longer term typically will be the lowest cost, right?
Yeah.
But the variation, so if your average person is using six hundred kilowatt hours per month, one cent is six dollars per month difference, right? So you know, if you're thinking, i- i- in a lot of this is just hedging, we're.
Yeah.
Right?
But we're also using a professional organization, that that's what they do day in, day out, is they study the the power grid, how things are working, you know, how these rates are working, and that's, you know, it's like it it trying to do your own investing, right? If you have people that do that stuff for you, that they know that language, they know what the trends are and stuff, so you use them.
But they also serve as a purchaser for a lot of other groups, and if you're not able to go in spot, but your community is locked in right now, it's in the mid-sixteen, it's not, yeah.
Right. So.
Was eight currently recommending, then are they they saying hold up for a two or eighteen? Is that kind of their gut right now?
Based on the prices we got that day, they were, you know, leaning towards that, but that was outside of our authorization. So I think really one of the main drivers is just that in the, you know, I I the point of an authorization like this is to give flexibility for a kind of qualitative assessment that technically could have been that at the time, but it functionally wouldn't have been, because there was literally a single bid that fit.
Yeah.
And I just didn't think that was appropriate, because I didn't think it reflected our discussion, and I hope I was correct.
I think you should just, I mean, your guide advised the experts that it was not necessarily the right time, so.
So.
Is it possible we could have a special meeting if we needed to discuss this after, if you have a break tomorrow?
It will, so the pricing is is fine, well, so the pricing is for that day.
Okay, so we have to literally meet tomorrow if we were gonna.
So.
And we should.
Would be able to, because.
We should authorize you for whatever.
We should, we should authorize the the period of time and, you know, the ceiling of of that, because for us to be able to pull a meeting together, you're gonna figure who's gonna be around, do we have a quorum, forty-eight hours to craft and post the agenda, and then you've lost a week just with that, you know?
No, we we trust you that do this.
What are you requesting for a ceiling, for authorization? What do you, what do you, you're the one looking at the numbers, you you know this stuff better than I, uh than all of us, what do you think? Who would you be comfortable with? What do you, how do you start it from?
I would not, but I again, I hope I don't have to regret this, because things coming different tomorrow, but I won't know until I see it tomorrow.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think I'm personally comfortable with much more than seventeen.
I was gonna say seventeen.
Because that's already quite an increase for the for what we're locked in at home, you know? Then folks are bright enough to get net savings over time, and no, it's gonna, it won't feel great no matter what, if that's the case.
Yeah.
Only way, it'll be less than what National Guard.
Yeah, that's the goal, uh you know, and and so theoretically, I mean, the goal, at least out of the game, is that we're heading out of the first three-year phase, which has been really successful, and sink thousands for your average person into the winter of this year, where none of us want a price quote, but I could keep it at ten cents for it, I would. But the market is in the high teens, low twenties, and we're in the mid-teens maybe, and so you're still a better off.
Yeah, you said two people can opt in, opt out, that's the rule, so that's.
Correct, and if for some reason, you know, if for a reason that's outside of our control, we lock in now and then.
Market just drops to the floor, it's like, oh, and then just jump ship.
It probably, then then people will be able to opt out for free.
People are paying attention to this, I've been, I'm just saying.
And they're certainly not in the past uh eight months.
Yeah, yeah.
We've probably received more phone calls on this program in the past eight months than the first two years.
So they're.
Are you also suggesting eighteen months?
I I it's gonna have to be based on what the bid's coming out, so the last time you authorized any amount, any term up to three years, I would suggest that stay the same. If we, you know, if we see something um very advantageous for three years in colonial based on what we've seen through indicative pricing, they're basically doing this every day or something.
Like if you see ten cents again for three years, and then it's sorry.
Take it.
Yeah, I'll call a special meeting again.
Yeah. Uh but I I for anyone watching, you have no reason to think that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wish it, I wish it would. Um.
So I I.
So you're you're looking for what, sixteen cents as?
No, I I would say a ceiling at seventeen, um if the board's open to it.
Seventeen. Seventeen.
Hopefully it's better than that, but I just, I I'm just being fully transparent, I have no control. Um.
Well, I had a different power supplier that I had been in before the aggregation, that I had like nine cents. And so that just ended this month, and now it's gone, it's gone way up. So I'm switching into the town one, but there's a thirty-day wait from when you notify the first one to then when you can sign up for the second one. So um you know, I like having the flexibility of doing that, but you have to pay attention to when these things change in in the private one. So locking in for two years is is, you know, or three years is is good, because you don't have to uh put that on your calendar to make sure you're looking at it. Um we're talking about it, hopefully that gets gets out, people know that, but.
That's why two years feels like a good sweet spot, because just in energy terms, it's three is really a long time, but two feels two double this.
Yeah.
Right, at the time, back in twenty twenty, the the board had a pretty long discussion and debate about it. It was, because it wasn't an easy call in at that time. Of course, in hindsight, it feels like it was, but back then, it was not a common see si- single-digit energy cost in the summer. So ten cents wasn't necessarily a slip dunk, it was, the hope was to have net savings on an annualized basis, which would still be the goal here. Um.
Yeah.
Alright, so uh Craig, you wanna make the motion to um amend the vote to authorize Town Administrator V to?
Yeah, to seventeen cents.
Yeah.
And and no term, no term?
Up to three years.
Up to three years, okay.
Please.
So move, project.
Second land.
Project and land, all in favor? You name it.
Thank you. I wish uh had it was able to come in cheaper in first round, but well.
Thank you, right, go.
They may, they still.
They still.
But like you said, there's a lot of changes going on here in the energy industry right now, so.
Yes. It's it's tremendous.
Okay.
Alright, excellent. So on to item eleven, acceptance of minutes for April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and May twenty-six, twenty twenty-three.
So move, project, second land.
Project and land, all in favor? You name it. Uh approval only of executive session minutes, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three?
So move, project, second land.
Project and land, all in favor? You name it. Uh Town Administrator notes.
I have done.
Done for the Town Administrator, Assistant Town Administrator, any notes?
No.
Um Select Board notes.
Um just wanna say, you know, fantastic job to all of the Human Rights Committee and all the other partners who were involved in yesterday's Pride events. Um it was absolutely fantastic. Um second year, the event has been held, and uh we were there from right when it started, around ten in the morning until a little past noon. Um and it's, as always, just so family-friendly, um excellence. You know, just all-around great vibes, and um it is one of my kids' favorite days of the year, as far as when she passed here and getting that to the community. My daughter's favorite thing was reading to um a service dog, so they had a program where you could read a service dog,
Oh.
and she was really excited to read um the book Dirt to the dog, so.
Oh, that's great.
Just a really great event, so.
Excellent. Mark?
Your comments?
Craig?
I had a wonderful time at the Pride event. I was so impressed with um the s- every, the smiles, the enthusiasm, the civility that went on, people feeling comfortable being able to dress the way they wanted to dress. Um the uh the the vendors were all very engaged and engaging. Um and um I I just, I just thought it was fantastic. Uh we kept count, they were they were having a count at either end as people came in. Uh when I left about one-thirty, there were over five hundred people that had participated, uh which is significant. I don't know what the final count was, um but um it was, it was something special as far as I was concerned and.
It's exciting to see the numbers were that high, because I said to my colleagues today, we had a couple hundred people, I don't think it was that high. And they were blown away by that number, a couple hundred, so that's fantastic.
They had, they had a great, um they had an ice cream truck and they had a food truck. It had um um the uh the food truck was, I think, the the was the highlight for a lot of people. Uh the kids liked the ice cream truck, but the food truck was was um um, you know, it, people were lined up all day long to get to get into there. Um but they also had some of our local, Farmer's Daughter was here, there was a cupcake group that was here. Um and um it was, it was just, Human Rights Committee was, had their T-shirts, and people were buying the T-shirts and then going to the to the vendor behind them, which is also a human rights individual, about to be an Oliver A. Stewart, who's a member of the of the of the committee. They were tie-dyeing it, and then people were, it was pretty, it was really cool, it was really cool. Um you could tell that I didn't enjoy it, so um it was, it was terrific, it was absolutely terrific.
That's great, excellent, and nice weather.
Yes, as opposed to the day before, when I went to the the Wings of Hope, and it was raining on and off, and the turnout was was much, was much lower because of the weather, I think. Um.
Yeah. Excellent. Well, um I am looking forward to jingting. I hope that we have a great turnout for that, and I think we probably will, because there's huge trucks and ice cream, so that seems to be the key.
We're, we're learning.
And I also do want to uh say Happy Father's Day this Sunday to all the fathers or the people acting as fathers or or uh parental role models, and if people are not able to be with their father, thank you to their father on that special day. So uh with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move, project, second land.
Project and land, all in favor? You name it. Excellent. Thanks, everybody. See you in a couple weeks.